Okay, this is the Village of Peatone Board Meeting for September 22nd, 2014. We begin by rising to say the Fledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Here.
Mr. Ricker?
Here.
Mr. Hack?
Here.
Mr. Callahan?
Here.
Mr. Forsyth?
Here.
Let the record show that we have a quorum of trustees present and we may officially conduct business. Trustees, your first order of business is the approval or corrections to the minutes of September 8th, 2014, regular Village Board meeting minutes. We'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented, or tell us if you see a need for a correction. Motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Forsyth, to approve the minutes as presented. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Present.
And Mr. Ricker?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Minutes are officially adopted as the official record of that meeting. Trustees, you have in your packet the accounts payable and payroll. The payroll is for the pay period ending September 13th of 2014 in the amount of $46,618.86. You have in the water and sewer fund bills totaling $25,627.70. The total of the general fund and water and sewer fund bills is $56,042.60. I will entertain a motion to pay the bills.
I make a motion, we pay the bills.
Motion by trustee Ricker, seconded by trustee Hupkey, to pay the bills as presented. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ricker?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries and the bills will be paid accordingly. We come to the part of the agenda for public comment for any non-agenda item. In other words, if you're on the agenda later when that topic comes up, come up and speak to us. So, there's nobody to speak to the board at this time, so we will move on with reports of community officials and staff. Trustees, you will find in your report the reports of the clerk, collector, and the treasurer indicating revenues that have come in in the past month. If there are no questions on that, we'll move forward to the next item, which is the police chief report. Chief?
We got a question.
Very good question, George, I'm sorry. On the treasurer's report, can I just confirm, there's a large deduction on the motorfield tax fund, I think that's Raf G. Rowe.
Yes. It's the last payment to IDOT, yes.
Okay, what about the water fund? There's a large subtraction there as well.
Did we finish paying for the...
That's probably one of our debt payments.
Is that what it probably is?
Yeah, just one of our debt certificate payments.
Okay.
Carry.
Yeah, that's the largest expenditure we've had, so, yeah.
Okay. Well, we got then to the police report, the chief is not here. Therefore...
He asked if he could be excused this evening.
Okay. Engineers' report.
Nothing new, I think George can discuss the sidewalks later.
Yes.
And we began working on the lift station generator project.
Oh, good.
I'm going to move.
So, you got something new?
Yeah, a little bit.
All right. We have no old business. Under new business, the registration of the Meltaway. George, you want to go over that one? New business.
Yes, this is a, this is registration for the Meltaway at Sunset Plaza. It's infrared therapy. It is, our machines will provide infrared therapy technology to benefit our customers' mind and body. We open Monday through Friday, 9 to 8, Saturday 9 to 8, Sunday 12 to 4. They expect to occupy in January of 2015. It's owned by Gillian Rojas. There she is.
Hello.
Gillian, would you like to come up and...
Sure.
Pull the microphone down because that way it'll get recorded too.
All right.
All right, tell us about the business.
It is infrared spot therapy, so it's a machine that you would get into and you get what's called wrapped, you're fully clothed, and the infrared basically puts heat through your body and it helps with weight loss, it helps with pain management. There are several other chronic diseases that it helps with. We'd also like to have a massage table in there, so it's kind of a, you know, we're going for a health and wellness type situation.
Okay. Trustees, do you have any questions? If anybody wanted to, could they do any research on this therapy?
Sure.
To make sure that it's safe and anything else?
Absolutely.
Google it up, or...
Yes, you can Google, if you Google infrared body wraps, it'll bring up the information on it. I also have some information that I could bring in if you guys would like. I have a packet with me, but it's not on the machine that I'm actually going to be purchasing, it's just on the body wraps in general. But, yeah, if you Google infrared therapy, there's a whole bunch of information about it. It, I actually learned about it in California, out on a vacation trip with my sister, and researched it in the area. There's not a lot of infrared therapy treatments in the state of Illinois, let alone locally, so I think it will be really good business and part of making people happy.
All right, and everything right now is in the startup stages with the expectations, come early January...
Correct. I have already, I have put my deposit down, I definitely have the location, and then the Baumgartner Squad Fitness will be moving out of there, and then once they're gone, we're going to go in and we are going to have to put in a few interior walls, but other than that, our goal is to open sometime after January 25th.
Now, are there state licenses you have to get?
There is no licenses from the state that we have to get, we will be certified to use the machines.
Okay, what about, if you're talking about massage?
Well, if we have a massage person, we will have a massage therapist who is licensed. I personally am not licensed.
Okay. All right. Any more questions?
Sounds good.
Welcome. I will entertain a motion to approve the business registration of the Meltaway.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Forsyth, to approve the business registration of the Meltaway. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
And Mr. Ricker?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Next item has to do with directions that we might give to the Planning and Zoning Commission. George, you want to explain that?
This item is on the agenda because of business registration applications submitted for consideration later on the agenda, specifically Savvy Hair Gallery and Spa. There are several properties on Route 50 zoned industrial that might be better served with business zoning. Properties are on the east side of Route 50, starting north of American Cylinder and extending north to the intersection of Drexler Road and Route 50. These properties primarily contain commercial uses that are legal nonconforming with grandfather or uses that are marginally industrial, such as the animal hospital and the Forest Greenhouse. While the village periodically receives commercial inquiries regarding these properties, I have not received a single industrial contact. The geometry of some of these properties would make future industrial development unlikely on those parcels. Rezoning from industrial to business classifications would expand the potential uses of the properties. I have spoken to some, but not all of the property owners in the area. The owners with whom I have had an opportunity to speak are open to discussions regarding the rezoning. Should the board choose to direct the Planning and Zoning Commission to pursue the matter, the petition would be filed by the village, not the property owners. Staff would meet with the property owners to explain their proposal and receive comments and concerns. Planning and zoning commission would then follow established protocol by discussing the proposal in a public meeting, conducting a public hearing to determine, A, if the zoning should be changed on any of the parcels, and B, if so, what parcels and to what business zoning classification needs to be done. PZC would then conduct a findings of fact and forward a recommendation to the Village Board for final actions, as they do with any rezoning application. So, the item before you is, do you want to send a request to the Planning and Zoning Commission to maybe take a look at rezoning some of these properties from industrial to business? And if so, give recommendations to which classifications.
Should we quick, go ahead. No. So, we need to rezone that specific location for this new business?
Well, it's actually, it's even more interesting than that because it's half of a building.
Okay.
It's one, one unit in, in a building. It's the building that has the country insurance.
Okay.
Okay? It's where Same Day Tees used to be.
They're a t-shirt gang over there.
Yeah, and same, we permitted Same Day Tees because they did some printing on their, on their, you know, but...
So, they're renting the unit, not owning it?
That is, that's my understanding, yes. I believe Dr. Naylor owns it.
Owns the property. And he's okay with rezoning, having it rezoned?
Yes, I've, I've spoken with him.
I mean, do we have to go to Planning and Zoning just to rezone this one building?
Yeah.
Can we get that done and...
Legal proceedings. And I think, if you're familiar with some of the things that have been in and out of that area, and the likelihood that it's going to have a business application more so than industrial, simply because of the size and shape of the parcels and all that.
It doesn't hurt to research this, this is a good idea to research. I agree with that.
This is getting back to our, being business friendly.
I agree with that, I was just seeing if we could get it done faster for them so they can get their answer for the future business.
Not according to the states of Illinois.
Okay.
Two quick questions though.
Yep.
Are there any businesses in this area now that if we rezoned it would not be, if they were new?
We're checking with Dr. Naylor, I mean, I've, I've spoken with Dr. Naylor.
Okay.
He may have one component of his that we'll need to take a look at.
Okay.
Okay?
So, there might be current businesses.
And we may be able to, yeah, we may be able to, but that's the only one I'm aware of, because the other one's vacant and the other is a Forest Greenhouse, and, and most of the things in there would slide nicely into a B-zone.
Okay.
Okay? And we may be able to, if that's the case with Dr. Naylor, we may be able to put something in the text of the zoning amendment that would accommodate whatever his concerns are.
And then just a general question, which I mean, I can look at a map if I have to. Other than that particular area, are there other industrial areas in town?
There, there's an industrial area immediately south.
Right, which is presently existing.
And then there's Black Diamond.
Okay.
And, and where the old Bennett building used to be, and...
Going north, it's an industrial alley.
Yeah. And there's some industrial down along across the Park District.
So, there is some room for industrial growth if necessary?
Yes, there is.
Not only that, but if you look at our comprehensive plan that we just went through, we have projected.
Okay, as long as we're not squeezing.
No, 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 no.
This is just thought through.
Yeah, I mean, and I can understand the initial rationale, the initial thought process, this, this goes back 15 or 20 years ago, but a couple of those parcels just, you know, you might get a small printing shop, kind of like Same Day Tees kind of was, but...
Doesn't fit the mold of the building.
Yeah, and in the meantime, you know, over the years, we've turned down businesses because they can't go there.
Okay. So, does this take a motion, or does this via consensus?
I think a motion would be, would be good. I would like to make one clarification, I said we turned down businesses, we advised them they can rezone, we didn't say you can't come here. We had given them the options of things they could do, it's just, that was more than they wanted.
And getting back to your point, this will expedite future development.
That's right.
Motion.
Second. Okay. Motion by trustee Forsyth, seconded by trustee Hupkey, to direct the P and Z Commission to review and forward possible zoning changes for the properties listed. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Ricker?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
And Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries and we will direct the Planning and Zoning Commission accordingly. Next item has to do with another business, oh, not resignation, registration as we referred, referenced in the previous discussion of rezoning. George?
Savvy Hair Gallery and Spa wishes to locate at 427 South Governor's Highway, and it's the old Same Day Tees location. This area is zoned industrial, spas and beauty shops are not a permitted use, therefore this business would not be permitted at this location. In the event that board is directed to P and Z to consider code changes in the area, which you just did.
Just did.
This registration could be approved conditioned on the later rezoning to an appropriate zoning classification. Normally, the board has limited discretion and consideration of business registration applications, however, as this application is for a use not currently permitted in the existing zoning classification, additional consideration is necessary for approval. So, the action is, action on the application, any approval contingent upon receiving the appropriate zoning from the P and Z and the Village Board at a later date.
Motion.
Second. Okay, motion by trustee Forsyth, seconded by trustee Hupkey, to approve the application for business registration contingent upon receiving the appropriate zoning from the P and Z Committee, Commission rather, at a later date. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Ricker?
Yes.
It's wearing off on you now, isn't it?
And Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
If I could.
Now, yes, let's bring them forward so that they can talk about their, you want to talk about your business?
Well, it's...
Get the microphone, please.
I mean, it's self-explanatory, it's a hair salon.
Yeah, but what we're doing is trying to give you advertising time.
Thank you. I have eight employees, they're all certified and licensed in what they do. I have two nail technicians, a Reiki therapist, a massage therapist, and three hairstylists currently doing hair. We are all together currently in a salon and are going to be relocating to Savvy, whenever that may be. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's pretty, you know, straightforward salon, so, I came just in case you had any questions for me about it, but...
When is the next planning and zoning meeting?
Well, this is, this is going to take three or four months because they have to do the public hearing, they have to consider the zoning uses, then they have to have a public hearing, and then they have to forward it to you.
Can we get the process started as soon as possible?
Obviously, we will, yes, but we've already missed the deadline for one, for one public hearing, so, and they, they're free to, with the conditions placed upon it by the board, they're free to open tomorrow. So, okay.
So, I don't have to wait for the approval? I mean, I can go ahead with the opening, but then what happens?
Yeah, it is, the approval is, you can go ahead and open it contingent upon receiving the zoning and rezoning at a later date.
Okay, so I don't necessarily have to wait, I can go forward with what I'm doing?
You can go forward and with the under, with the assumption that the P and Z and the Village Board...
So, then what happens if it isn't approved for what I do there, then what happens?
Well, then that is an exposure that you have, yes.
Okay. Now... Well, you know those little disclaimers you have to put at the bottom? He just gave you that.
Yeah.
All right? The likelihood from the discussion you heard with the board is sending a message to the P and Z that this looks like a good thing to do, we're likely to pass it if you bring it back to us, so it's got to move with all due haste.
Okay.
And I will, and I will just, also, just for clarification, they'll be looking at these parcels by parcel.
Okay.
I mean, it's, right now, it's, it's a long stretch of road, relatively long stretch of road, they'll look at that zoning parcel by parcel.
Okay.
So, that little triangle your building is on?
Right.
Will get looked at individually.
Right, and being that it is just a teeny little triangle, there's a chance there's not going to be a factory built there.
That's, that's kind of what we're saying, is it's, it's awfully tiny to try to put a good industrial use on, and in addition to that, the building already is broken into at least two units, in the past it's been three, so...
Yeah, I think it is going to be three, I think he's got someone earmarked for the one in the middle, so...
Okay.
Oh, that's right, I forgot about that one.
Yeah, the little one in the middle.
Yeah, the one that has been like a gift shop or something else for a short time.
Yeah.
And that was also a bakery at one time, used to get donuts there. Was it, which was also not industrial.
Yes.
So, good luck to you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
We come now to the action on the 2014 sidewalk bids.
The village budgeted by 50, 50, village budgeted $50,000 for sidewalks this year. We then received notice of $100,000 in state grants. The grant money was designated for the Wilmington Road Sidewalk Project. $50,000 for the annual sidewalk program was shifted to Wilmington Road Sidewalk Project to supplement the state grant. However, as weeks went by, it became evident that the grant paperwork was not going to be completed by the state in time for this construction season. Accordingly, the board directed the $50,000 in local funds for this year to be bid out for annual sidewalk maintenance, which is what it was originally. The village received two bids for the program, J.J. Newell in the amount of $50,833.75 and Davis Concrete in the amount of $66,236.75. However, the J.J. Newell bid contained a provision that the completion date be extended from the October 31 date to, and the specifications to November 30. If the completion date was not extended, the J.J. Newell bid was considered withdrawn. This provision effectively tried to amend the specifications by submission. The October 31 date was firm in the contract. The village had received word secondhand that an additional contract was going to bid but did not think they could be completed by October 31, and therefore did not submit a bid. By incorporating the condition in their bid, the J.J. Newell bid became nonconforming and ineligible for award. The only valid bid is the bid of Davis Concrete in the amount of $66,236.75. Now, I'll stop right here, you know, does, Mr. Bartley, does the village attorney agree with all this assessment?
Yes, I absolutely do.
Okay.
We've gone over it.
Okay. However, awarding the bid to Davis Concrete would require a reduction in the project scope to come within the budget amount. The board could also reject all bids, postpone the sidewalk program until next fiscal year, and do an additional $50,000 of work then. After reviewing the matter with legal counsel, the board has a third option available, reject all bids, waive competitive bidding, change the completion date to November 30 of 2014, and request sealed proposals from all three firms. The scope of work would remain the same, all other aspects of the bid specifications, prevailing wage, materials, et cetera, you know, special conditions, all would remain unchanged. However, by using a sealed request for proposals, the response time is shortened and staff can expect to have new proposals ready for the next Village Board meeting.
And we would still have enough season in order to get the project done, and we would have the three parties that took out the stuff to, the materials to bank a bid eligible to, to give us the sealed bid, therefore, I think nobody's being left out of the process in terms of fairness.
The only thought process or question actually I have on this is originally, we weren't talking about doing any sidewalks this year because we're doing the main sidewalk at Wilmington Road, correct?
Well, we, we had budgeted 50,000, then after the budget was approved, we got a notice of $100,000 in grant, then we shifted it to...
Wilmington Road.
To Wilmington Road, yes, because it was not enough.
That being said, you're saying that if we wait till next season, we have an additional $50,000, so we're looking at 100,000 for the sidewalk program?
We would have, assuming we get the grant paperwork, which I think is 199%, we'll have it by then, I hope, we would have the $100,000 grant. We would normally, I mean, it's not done yet because we're not at that stage, we would normally budget 50,000 for sidewalks.
Right.
And then you could roll this 50,000 over, if we don't use it, into that.
We've learned in the past that if we contract a lot of things all at one time, we get that one company and do a bunch of projects all at once, we seem to be able to do more. So, what I'm saying is if we wait till next season, that 200,000 may go further and we may get more sidewalks done if we just do it all at once. We bid out to Wilmington, we build out the other ones, we get the one bid coming back, and now we've got more paying for our bucks, so to speak. We were already planning on not having any additional sidewalks done this year a couple months ago, I mean, I know we changed that, so we're not really changing that much.
Are there any stipulations with the grant, George, where we can do that?
No, the $100,000 in the grant will go toward Wilmington Road, which is eligible, okay? What we're talking about is our money, so it's up to us where we want to spend that. The only stipulation is, I guess, I guess one stipulation of the grant is, we have to have enough in the budget to finish it, it was estimated at 150,000, including engineering, and the grant's only 100, so, yeah, we've got, you know, I guess one stipulation corollarily to the grant is that we put 50 grand toward it to finish the job.
I actually was on the same page as trustee Forsyth was about postponing it for the same reasons. Okay. Which would, any of the other board members want to chime in here?
We've still got sidewalks in town we've got to take care of.
Okay.
It's still a safety factor, we've still got a lot of terrible sidewalk shit.
No, my, my...
If it's 150, it's 150, and you can still get some work done.
Both scenarios are good.
I saw instead of getting, you know, some sections done, we can get more sections done. You know, we may not, it depends on how the bid comes back.
Well, the cost of concrete can go up. Are there any immediate safety concerns about any of these sidewalks that need to be looked after or replaced that you're aware of? Where were they?
There are, well, some of them are on Second Street.
Oh, yeah, they were sold downtown.
Yeah, some of them are...
We got it, we got it, we got it listed someplace, don't we?
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I...
Well, we had it for the last meeting.
It should be at the, like, minutes of the last meeting, wasn't it?
Is it?
Do you have it there, Troy?
The ones we were showing this year that we were going to do are on Second Street Downtown, on North Street, between Conrad and West Street, and then Crawford Street just west of Route 50.
But the question is, is there a safety concern?
There's, there's the, one over here with the catch basin and Second and Main.
Yeah, yep.
It's just a section.
And that's a safety concern?
Yeah.
I'm clarifying.
It is more likely to be a concern than, than the other parts of the, of the scope, yes.
I'm just saying, up until three months ago, we weren't going to do that.
I see.
We weren't going to do those sidewalks anyways, so if it wasn't a safety concern then, you know, the severity of it hasn't changed.
Yeah, the other, the other side of that is, we know Wilmington Road is a safety concern, and you want to make sure you have enough money to do that, so...
Okay.
I mean, there are, there are justifications for both.
Okay. If, if that be the preferred choice of action, then what happens, we have to have a motion to reject all bids and just leave it there?
Yes, that's all you would need to do.
Okay. I make a motion, we checked all bids.
Second.
Motion by trustee Hupkey, seconded by trustee Forsyth, to reject all bids. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hupkey?
Yes.
Mr. Forsyth?
Yes.
Mr. Callahan?
Yes.
Mr. Hack?
Yes.
And Mr. Ricker?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, all bids are, and the money therefore will be carried over. Motion carries, all bids are, and the money therefore will be carried over.
Now, you'll just redid whenever you choose to.
Yes, that's it.
Yeah.
It'll be next budget year, yes.
Okay. There's that. I have, under announcements, this reminder that the fall paving projects, we've posted a notice on our webpage, and we've sent it out via constant contact to all who would like to know, and I'm going to ask that Karen puts it in the newspaper, but the, the paving projects, the first project is going to be the bridge on Corning Avenue, starting September 29th, weather, weather permission permitting, between the Piattown Cemetery and Ridgeland Avenue. The bridge will be closed for one to two weeks, it depends on the amount of repairs needed. Access to Meyer Glen and the Piattown Cemetery will not be impacted by this. Through the intergovernmental cooperative effort, the other paving projects in the